Gonna go ahead and call the speeding door. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the, those that are here tonight for our city council meeting. First thing I'd like to do is go ahead and get an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. We do not have any presentations tonight, so we'll move on into our consent agenda. Tonight's city, our consent agenda consists of city council minutes for June 11th, 2018, revised, which everyone now has, the approval of dispersments through June 25th, 2018, and liquor licenses approval. Anybody have any problems with our consent agenda? Anybody wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? If not, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Motion. I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry. Yeah, motion. Make a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Okay, we now move on into our public comment. Do we have anything for public comment tonight?
Mayor Hague, we do have one individual, but I believe she will be addressing council during her, the planning commission appointment agenda item.
Okay, thank you. We now move on into our public hearing. Public hearing tonight is for La Sure Charter, Chapter 13, Section 01, Charter Commission Membership, the second reading.
Mayor Hague, the procedure for this process is to open the public hearing, see if there's any individuals that have shown up tonight to offer public comment on this, and then close it, and then take action accordingly. But in the meantime, I will give an update on what this is. Essentially, this is unchanged from two weeks ago. It's a charter amendment, so establishing Chapter 13 of the La Sure City Charter. And what this chapter will address is Charter Commission Membership. The current commission consists of 15 members. The proposed makeup would go down to nine members, and no more than two may be active city council members or elected or appointed city council members. And the way that it would work is the mayor would make recommendations for that council member. If a seat is vacant after sufficient attempts to fill, and that'll be at the discretion of city council, the mayor may appoint an additional city council member to serve on the charter commission. So with that, I'll entertain any questions from city council or the public. The proposed action would be to waive the second reading of the ordinance and approve the ordinance as written with any charter amendment. This change would go into effect 30 days after the meeting, since it has been published in the, in the La Sure Newshero. So with that, next steps would be to open the public hearing, see if there's any, any comments, close the public hearing, and then answer, answer, ask questions accordingly.
Is there a motion to go ahead and open up the public?
So moved.
Meeting, the public hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Public hearing is now open. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address city council regarding La Sure Charter, Chapter 13, Section 01, for the Charter Commission Membership? Anybody from city council have anything to ask at this time regarding the La Sure Charter, Chapter 13? Go ahead and take a motion to go ahead and close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and waive the second reading of the proposed Chapter 13 of the La Sure City Charter and approve the amendment to the city charter as written.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion's carried. Okay, we now move on to our regular agenda. And the first item on the docket is eight alpha, which is the city council vacancy.
Mayor Hague, members of the city council, we do have a declared vacancy on the city council. The term for this vacancy goes through the end of 2018, so that will expire on December 31st, 2018. We have received six applications, so there was an application process. It was open roughly 30 days, and those applications have been included in the packet. What the recommendation is from staff, and these are just some options that, that I've come up with, you guys could deviate from these how you feel, but, and I've received some feedback from the two individuals that aren't here as well on this. And it seems to me that their, their opinion is to, and I can't speak for them, but to invite predetermined individuals back for the July 10th meeting. Hopefully, we have more, more than four individuals here to ask questions, maybe allow them to give a statement about why they want to participate in the city council, and go from there. You do have options. You could appoint an individual tonight at this meeting, or you could determine that the vacancy should remain unfilled until the start of the new term. Now, that third option is just an option. I wouldn't recommend it. I think that we have a duty to, to fill the seat, and there's, you know, we need, like tonight, we have four people, four individuals. We're close to not making quorum, so it's important. So my recommendation would just be to look at the applications, potentially make a motion to invite a couple, two, three, you know, maybe four. It doesn't matter. Back to the July 10th meeting, staff can, reach out to them, ask them if they have any questions about operations, things like that, and get them more prepared about, with, with city council happenings. That's just, that's a suggestion. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have. The, the six individuals, I believe that this is the same order that is in your packet, if that helps.
That's right.
With the selection process. So all, all we're really looking for is a motion, potentially to invite some of these individuals back for the July 10th meeting, unless, unless you choose to go a different direction.
And I'd like to go ahead and add that I think that with the, with council member Krogman and council member Johnson not present tonight, I think that's probably the best course of action, is to go ahead and figure out if we have some individuals amongst the four of us, we'll go ahead and recommend to have those individuals return for our next city council meeting. If we, if we do have any, if, what I mean, if anybody should jump right at us to go ahead and be part of that, to come back at the next meeting, then we can go ahead and close this out next meeting, if that's fair enough for you all. Anybody have any recommendations on any of the six candidates?
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Roloff?
Yes, I would like to recommend Marvin Sullivan.
Okay.
I have three that, that I would like to hear from that.
Council member Favalis?
I like their, I like their applications quite a bit, actually. One is Christopher Jansma, Marv Sullivan, and the other was Jeff Warmka. I apologize if I'm not pronouncing the last names properly. All of which put a fair amount of detail into, into filling this out, and definitely seemed to be interested in, in public service.
Okay. Council member Huntington?
Well, I would like all six of them come back on July 10th, so I like every one of these candidates, so.
Okay.
To be fair, without Krogman and Johnson being here, all six of them come back.
And I know that council member Johnson has indicated that he'd like to have Sullivan and Morley, based off an input that I received earlier today. I have not heard anything back from council member Krogman. So we've got everything from one individual all the way to six. Somebody want to go ahead and create a motion regarding how we want to proceed for our next meeting?
I'll make a motion that we invite all six back on July 10th.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Okay. That motion's defeated. How about, looks like we have Sullivan, Jansma, Warmka, and Morley, those four individuals. Is there a motion that those four individuals be invited back to our next meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second to that?
I will second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of inviting back Mr. Sullivan, Jansma, Warmka, and Morley? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against?
Aye.
Okay. Let the record reflect three to one. Okay. So if we can go ahead and have staff invite the four, the four individuals to come back to our city council meeting, first meeting in July, please. Okay, we now move on to line item eight Bravo, which is the Recreation and Parks Advisory Commission, RPAC city council appointment.
Mayor Hague, members of the city council, if you remember, at the last meeting, we appointed five individuals to the RPAC team. It was, it was brought up by the mayor to bring this forward at the next meeting regarding the council representation. So after discussion with the mayor, he would like to propose having both Johnny Favalis and Benjamin Roloff be the city council representatives. Now, these would both be non-voting members. In the bylaws, it states one person. This would be a call from the group to be able to have two. It's, it's fine. It doesn't affect voting. It's just, and in reality, if two council members want to go to this meeting, they can, and they can provide input as needed as well. So I don't see an issue with it, with, with two council members. It's just council members' time to do these things, and, you know, being that this is a new board, there will likely be a lot of meetings and lengthy meetings just to get things established. So if this does happen, I appreciate the, the time and effort put in by city council to, to get this going. So with that, I'll entertain any questions, and really, questions would likely go to the mayor.
Any questions? I'd like to go ahead and make a motion then for council member Favalis and Roloff to serve on, as our city council representatives on the Recreation and Parks Advisory Commission, known as RPAC. Is there a second?
So moved.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. We now move on to line item eight Charlie, which is our Planning Commission Application Consideration.
Mayor Hague, members of the city council, we do have an application to evaluate for the Planning Commission, and she is here tonight, so that is great. Annette Pruitt Rogers, if I pronounce it correctly or incorrectly, I apologize. The application has been included in the packet. As you can see, she's applied to be on, I believe, I can't remember all of the different ones, Planning Commission, Airport Commission, Board of Zoning and Adjustments, and CPAT. So with that, I'll entertain any questions, and maybe Annette wants to come up and, and give a little statement? No? Okay.
Why don't you please come on up, Annette? We have some questions for you, I think.
All right.
And for the record, if you'd please identify yourself.
You want me up here?
Right on the dais there.
I'm Annette Pruitt Rogers.
Welcome.
And I live in La Sure.
Okay. And you're, you have a desire to go ahead and serve on the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Planning and zoning commission?
Yes.
Okay. I'll start off with the questions. Do you, have you had a chance to take a look at the city's comprehensive plan and the downtown master plan?
I haven't recently, but I have before in the past.
And you're familiar with the city of La Sure's website?
Yes.
Okay, so you know that that's where you can go to find all this information?
Yep.
Because one of the things that's going to be very important moving forward is we're going to have to have somebody that really understands the comprehensive plan and the downtown master plan, because we've taken the Planning and Zoning Commission into a much more important role than it's been perhaps in the past within the city. So that's one of the reasons why we want to have, we've expanded the number of people with on, within this particular board. We certainly want to have citizens that are willing to go ahead and roll up their sleeves and ready to go to work.
Absolutely.
Because we want to do it moving forward. We want to grow this community.
Absolutely.
City council members, anything for Annette?
Do you have a good idea as to what you're going to be doing on Planning and Zoning?
Not completely. I talked to, I don't remember her name upstairs in the office a while back, and, you know, was asking her some questions, and she told me to feel free if I had any questions about, you know, the position or whatever. They were very helpful at that point, and that encouraged me to go forth. I have, I've never done this kind of work before, but I have gone to school for carpentry and stuff, so I know a little bit about some, some of that, not, not a whole lot, so. But I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and, and get in there, so, and learn some more stuff.
That's the start, right?
Yep.
That's the start. Anything else? Council member Favalis?
Just reading through your application, it's, it's clear that, that you care, and you can see that by your volunteer work, and the fact that you actually want to do something to make a difference in our town.
Yep.
And the rest of it, you'll learn.
Council member Huntington, any questions?
No, I don't, but I thank you very much for volunteering, wanting to be a part of this community and stuff.
Okay, thank you. Council member Roloff?
I don't have anything.
Okay. It's going to be a lot of work. Okay, just like we were saying before, there's going to be quite a few meetings, so we will get me aboard. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to go ahead and accept Annette Pruitt Rogers to our Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Not, not all, not all discussions are, are 100% everybody on board with things. So there's, there's always going to be some type of conflict in there, or there could be.
Yeah.
You up for that?
I'm not afraid of conflict.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is unanimously, unanimously approved. Welcome aboard to the team.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For volunteering, Annette. Do you know Commissioner Scott Schleter?
Yes.
Okay, he's, he's our chair for the Planning and Zoning. Might be a good idea to probably reach out to him, or I'll have him reach out to you. Get the contact information, and you guys can have a sit-down, and it can kind of explain to you what the roles and responsibilities are. And again, thank you very much for volunteering. Okay? We now move on to line item eight Delta, which has approved the Community Education Agreement with the Independent School District, number 2397.
Mayor Hague, members of the city council, the, the school's fiscal calendar doesn't exactly match up with the city's, so this is why we are seeing this in June. But essentially, we've had this agreement in place since 2014, I believe, July 1st of 2014. So this would be the, the fourth iteration that we have of this contract. There isn't much change to this. Essentially, this would go until June 30th of 2019. The facility lease would still be $10,000. The personnel services has increased by 3%, up to $46,149. And just to recap, this is for the city to provide director services for the Community Education Director position for the Independent School District. So right now, we have Lane Wilbright filling the roles of both the Recreation Director and the Community Education Director, as far as the school district goes. I did have a great conversation with Jerry Jensen, Jensen, the interim city administrator, soon that will be transitioning over here to a new individual. But between now and the, and the next contract due date, we're going to have some pretty extensive conversations about possibly ramping this up for both sides. They've indicated that they've, they have a desire to potentially have a full-time person be their Community Education Director, and I think that we could have a serious conversation about that recreation side as well. You think about our community center, we have essentially one in, a director that's allocated half-time to direct those operations. So it'd be something that Personnel and Budget would look into for the 2019 budget, which we'll be talking about here later tonight. But just so you know, that those conversations are happening between city administration and the, the school administration. So with that, what the proposed action is, is to approve the attached contract. You can see that this has already went to the school board, it has been approved by the school board, and what this would do is allow us to continue to provide these services through June 30th of 2019. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
Okay. I think that you said interim city administrator, and I think you meant the school superintendent? And the discussions on that are that they may have somebody, or looking at somebody full-time to handle the community ed work. Is that what I understood?
Yeah, I don't think that they have identified anybody. I think that they've, Jerry has just identified the idea that we should talk about it this year, this, this contract year, to see once if it makes sense for both sides. You know, I think that this was something that was done to help save money for both entities, and now we've gotten to this point where I think as a city, we've identified the community center as something we want to manage and make sure that we're growing correctly and allocating more time towards it. So I think from the city's standpoint, our goals align with a potential full-time position just for the recreation and community, or recreation and community center aspect. Now they're going to look at that as well on their sides, and we'll start that conversation early, because if we do go down that road, we'll have to incorporate it into the 2019 budget, which Personnel and Budget will be developing shortly.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion, and we approve the agreement to ensure that the services are not interrupted.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. We now move on to line item eight Echo, which is the Personnel Actions, and just before the meeting, our city administrator handed us the information on the two individuals. So why don't we go ahead before we ask questions, why don't we take a few minutes to kind of review this, and then we can go ahead and get back, and if we have any questions, our city administrator, we can do it at that time.
If I may, I could give a little update on just how, how I handle these types of hires, just so everybody knows. Essentially, we have direct, we have an administrator, we have a director, we have directors, and then we have managers. What I typically do is I'll bring the director level positions to the Personnel and Budget Committee for approval prior to the meetings. The, the manager positions, I'll bring just straight to city council, as that's essentially the third tier of management that we have here at the city. So I'll give you guys a couple minutes to, to look those over, and then I can give a little update.
Jansma, what's your class essay?
I got the question. What is a class essay? It's a, it's a class of wastewater license for collection systems. So in the metro area, like Burnsville, they don't have a wastewater treatment plant. They deliver everything to Metropolitan Council. That essay license is required to maintain that collection system.
So in this, the, our, our new public works director keeps the, the Class A wastewater license, and this person works underneath them as the manager for the plant?
Correct, correct. Yep. If, if I could, I'll, I'll focus on the Streets and Parks Manager first, and then we can get into the, the questions about water, wastewater.
Everybody had a chance to go ahead and review? Talk about TJ Heinrichi.
All right, so TJ, well, let's just start off. We had 23 applicants for this position. Staff narrowed it down to four, and we had four interviews last week, and through that process, we identified TJ Heinrichi as the, the clear favorite for this position. He does have 23 years of public service in Streets and Parks. He's been a supervisor in that capacity for 16 years. He's been the city forester for 22 years. I personally know TJ. He is a class act, and he is very knowledgeable about Streets and Parks. It'll be, in my opinion, a great addition to the city of La Sure. I think- I think both of these candidates will bring a lot of, uh, great new ideas to the city. Um, you know, we've, we've operated under the same management for some years, and, uh, that's great for stability, but a lot of times you don't get new idea generation. And I think just me personally, from, from hiring a new public services director, just some of the things that he's seen that I haven't seen or, you know, things like that, it's just amazing how this, how this all works. So, um, but yeah, you know, you can see TJ's obviously experienced. Um, we've had, uh, at, Stacy was in on the interviews, he was a clear favorite out of the four that were there. Um, so based on his, uh, existing pay that he receives, now, uh, he would fall in line with a grade fourteen. Now, all, both of these positions, these manager positions are grade fourteens, and these go up to nine. So, this is a little bit above, um, you know, the halfway mark of being a five, but it falls within the, the range of, of what his current salary is. Um, the ten years of service for PTO accrual services, or purposes, I believe this is appropriate because of his number of years of service he has had, um, in the public realm. Uh, he has requested, uh, and we have granted, and then I say we, it's, it's Rich and my, Rich Kuchera and myself, uh, forty hours of PTO. Uh, per the cellphone policy, uh, a manager has the option of either getting a stipend or, um, getting, uh, the cellphone, uh, issued by the city. And then, uh, the start date, if approved tonight, for the streets and parks manager would be July sixteenth. So, uh, two weeks from today, I believe, or three weeks from today. So, um, with that, after you've looked at the application, I'll entertain any questions you may have about the streets and parks manager. But it, it is my recommendation to recommend TJ for appointment to, to this position.
Okay, go off with a few questions. My first question is, what exactly is an MS four stormwater system?
So, an MS four is a, is a permit issued by the, uh, PCA. Uh, cities or communities larger than ten thousand, uh, need to have this separate, uh, storm sewer per- permit. Because we're under that, we are under the general state permit, um, but the city that he's coming from is an MS four city.
Well, I ask that, uh, quite honestly, because as we all know, we're, we, this is our first year with a stormwater, uh, utility now here in the city of La Sure, so it's gonna be great to have somebody that has that type of experience. My second question is, how many personnel does he manage, supervise?
Uh, right now is six. So, we, and we have seven under our team. So, when streets and parks are, they are combined now, uh, there are three individuals for parks and four individuals for streets.
And these represent both union and non-union positions in Northfield?
Correct, yep. I, I believe all the, all the, uh, positions he supervises in Northfield directly are union positions.
The person that just moved, uh, in the reorg that is handling parks still keeps with the same duties that that person has, just is answering to this person.
Correct, yep. So, I actually, direct reports, it's five. Um, overall report is seven. So, that, that street, or that park supervisor has two direct reports. So, total in the group is, uh, seven with five directs.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any additional questions for TJ Heinrichy?
I, I gotta say something with it, and that's, you know, we, you said you had twenty, how many?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, it's twenty-three or twenty-four, I think it was twenty-three. Twenty-two, sorry.
Well, with the changes that we made, we were looking to have, um, to have talent to come to the city. And to even have this in the pool, to have both of these individuals in the pool is pretty good, is really good. And to have twenty-three applicants is really good. We, we didn't even really, I don't think, had that for the city administrator jobs.
What type of, uh, commute does he have from Webster on a daily basis?
You know, I, I'd looked it up, I, I believe it's like thirty-five minutes, forty minutes, something like that, so.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, why don't we move on to Foster Transburg then?
Well, if, if you would, I, I would entertain a, a motion approving this if you guys are agreeable. Yeah, I would like that.
Is there a motion to go ahead and accept TJ Heinrichy then as our proposed, uh, let's see here, an application for our streets and parks manager position?
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? TJ Heinrichy's approved. Okay, Foster Transburg, please.
Yeah, Mayor Haag, members of the city council, the candidate that I'm bringing up for appointment, uh, for the water waste monitor, wastewater manager is, uh, individual by the name of Foster Transburg. He has seventeen years of municipal experience now. He holds an A water operator license and a C wastewater operator license. So, I'll talk about the A wa- the A water operator license is above and beyond what we need for our plant. We are a B plant. But what the A water operator license indicates is that they've had management skills. So, the A, both for sewer and water, um, the A license tests have a strong emphasis on personnel management and things of that nature. So, um, the fact that he holds this A water license, yeah, indicates that he does, that he passed that test, and he understands, uh, the management aspects of, of water delivery and, and things of that nature. Um, he does have his C wastewater operator license. So, just as a refresher, the, this position, it required a B water operator license and then, um, a C wastewater license, operator license. So, um, he meets those qualifications. Um, he does have plans to test for his B wastewater license in July, and he believes within a year after that, he'll be able to test for his A wastewater license, which, um, that would be great. And we would potentially have two double A, uh, water wastewater operators on staff, which is a huge asset. Uh, Foster is retired from the United States Air Force. Uh, he has, uh, obtained a bachelor's degree from Concordia University in organizational management and communications. As you can see from his resume, he has been, um, at all different levels, um, in multiple different municipalities, uh, going from Burnsville to the city of Fairbowl to the city of Northfield. Um, you know, I, I've, there was a little overlap between my time in, in Northfield and Foster's. I got to know him a little bit, but not too much. But, um, you know, his references all, all, uh, speak glowingly of him. Um, so, uh, the terms that were negotiated with this, based on the, the years of service and the, the current salary position, it would be a grade fourteen, step four. Uh, there would be ten years of service for PTO accrual purposes. Uh, he would start off with eighty hours of PTO, and he would, then again, get that one hundred dollar a month cellphone stipend. Uh, so with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have about Foster.
You say that he's retired, uh, nineteen ninety-two to nineteen ninety-nine, that's seven years. Did he get a medical discharge, retirement?
I do not know that.
Because, uh, it's twenty years from retirement in the military.
Maybe I misspoke and, yeah.
So, he's a veteran?
He's a veteran.
Is there, and I, and I know that you've, folks have already vetted and talked to him. It's a lot of places with some short time in there. Can you explain why? Um, I mean, the longest stay that he had was in Burnsville, and that was for thirteen years. But, you know, Northfield to present, and he's looking at another job. It was, uh, New Prague for three years, two years, three years. Fairbolt for a, not even a year. What's, any, any thoughts on that?
Uh, you know, I don't know the, the specifics of it. Um, you know, I think it's just making sure that you find a good place that you like to work at. Um, you know, I know that Rich, public services director, knows Foster very well. Uh, he actually worked under Rich in Northfield. Um, so, I, I'm, I'm confident that i- if he's in an environment that he, um, feels like his input is cherished, um, is used, that he will, he will acknowledge that and stick around, so.
Lives in Northfield, uh, that's, what, about an hour's commute each day, each way?
I'd say a little bit under that, yeah. But, yeah, it is, it is quite the commute. Uh, and, and just so you guys know, the, one of the requirements is that they live within one hour. That was in the, the job description. So, for these union on, or not union on call, but for these positions that deal with wastewater and some potential emergencies, we make sure that they live within one hour, so they can get here in a timely fashion.
And with our SCADA system that we would have, you'd be able to keep track of anything associated with both our water and wastewater plants, correct?
Yeah, that, we have a robust remote system for monitoring those systems.
Any additional questions in regards to Foster Transburg?
We have, we have wastewater and water folks that live in town, right? Okay.
Yes, we do.
Okay, just, you know, emergency things, uh, somebody on call, somebody that's here.
Correct, yep. And, and, um, this manager position, there won't ever, Foster would never be on call. Um, there would be a union employee and operator that would be on call. So, Foster would never be on call, but in case of an emergency, he could get here in a timely, timely fashion.
Okay.
Any other questions? Go ahead and entertain a motion then to approve, uh, uh, Foster Transburg for our water wastewater manager?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Congratulations to Foster Transburg and to TJ Heinrichy as our two latest city employees.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, please. Now we move on to eight echo, which is our personnel actions. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, eight F, eight foxtrot, which is our two thousand and nineteen budget priorities and process calendar.
Mayor Haag, members of the city council, believe it or not, it is, uh, we're gonna start talking about the two thousand and nineteen budget and, and that process. Uh, similar to last year, what I would like to get from city council, and this can be informal, or you can ta- you can make a motion, um, but basically to give the personnel and, and budget committee some guidance as far as what the, the, some of the priorities are for the two thousand and nineteen budget formation. Uh, on the screen, you'll see what the two thousand and nineteen budget schedule is. Uh, there are five personnel and budget committee meetings that are scheduled. Now, again, same as last year, if we need more, we can always schedule more, or if we need to, or if we can get rid of one, we can get rid of one. Um, it's very flexible, but this is just, um, an idea of what you might see as far as, um, touchpoints for personnel and budget and city council. So, just some, uh, some highlights, uh, city council needs to approve a preliminary budget by the end of September. We have this scheduled for, uh, September tenth, twenty nineteen, or twenty eighteen. Um, and then from there, after that, after our preliminary, uh, budget is, or preliminary levy is adopted, then we start working on the enterprise funds quite heavily, uh, looking at CIP, CEP items. Um, and we'll bring that to personnel and budget and city council. Um, so, essentially that internal, we've already done some internal budget preparation. We've, uh, generated the two thousand and nineteen budgets. Uh, after tonight, they will go out to department heads for input on those. Now, there will be some changes, obviously, with streets and parks being combined and us budgeting for those. Uh, likely you'll see, uh, parks disappear, and it'll still be in the budget, but all the numbers will be zero for two thousand and nineteen. Those will just be incorporated into the streets budget, and we'll call it streets and parks. Uh, the first personnel and budget committee meeting is scheduled for, uh, July eleventh. Um, I haven't confirmed this with the personnel and budget committee yet, but it's just a placeholder for that. Uh, moving on, uh, some of the budget priorities that I've identified as the administrator to potentially talk about, um, are to develop a revenue-neutral budget. So, what that means is that our expenses equal our revenues. Uh, one option, and this is something that we talked a little bit about at the personnel and budget committee last year, was to, uh, develop an investment policy for the city, a fund balance policy for the city. Now, if we were to do that in, in between the budget formation process and the budget adoption, we could have what would be a revenue-positive budget. And then that positive, uh, revenue would then be, uh, put into a savings account, and then that would, that would work on that fund balance policy and the investment policy. That's something that should be talked about at city council, and if it's something that they want personnel and budget to look into, we can definitely look into it. Um, the second thing that I've identified is to adopt a budget with a near-zero tax impact. So, what that means is that if property taxes go up, let's say they, or property value goes up three percent in twenty, uh, proposed in two thousand and nineteen, so let's say your tax, uh, assessment, your estimated market value of your property goes up three percent, that means that we would try to keep our levy increase to three percent to match that, so that the, the numbers would match the, the price increases, uh, for your potential home sale. Now, last year, I believe, we ended up at point nine percent, so zero point nine. So, it's a slight, slight, uh, improvement or slight, slight increase on what the tax, uh, uh, sorry, that the, um, property values increased in the county. Uh, but just from, from my input and from, uh, the finance director's input, we wanna keep that as close to zero as possible, um, just so that we, kinda, you'll hear this phrase numerous times during this process, that we grow with the city. So, if the, the property values are increasing, we then can grow as well. Um, uh, the third, third item would be to incorporate, uh, the city council priorities into the budget. Now, that's kind of a, a no-brainer, that just, just on there, and we always will end up doing that. Uh, the fourth thing is to evaluate, uh, utility rates and structure, sure, structures to ensure proper maintenance of infrastructure. Now, that goes along with all the enterprise funds that we have. But also, I wanted to make a point that we, we need to look at, um, like, community center, uh, membership rates and things like that, to make sure that the, the rates and the structures that we have and the way that we handle residents, non-residents, businesses, we're gonna look at that in more detail, uh, this year to make sure that that matches up with what other communities are doing and what our budget is for our community center. So, looking at that, and that would be adopted into the, the fee schedule portion of the budget. Um, those are the four that I've identified. I'm not sure if we wanna have a little open discussion, a little Q and A on what, uh, city council also has, and, and just give, give the personnel and budget committee some guidance for their first, first meeting that they have in July. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Well, if you're looking at a, at, uh, revenue-neutral budget, but then you're saying that if you had additional funds left over, it would be investment, but if we owe other funds in town, uh, in, in the city, then why aren't we paying those off first?
This would strictly be for the general fund, not any enterprise funds. I think you may be alluding to, uh, wastewater a little bit, um, with what they've done for interfund loans. But the, the general fund doesn't have any interfund loans that they have, that they're paying back at the moment. So, what that would mean is that if we would have a revenue positive, we would end the year. And if you remember from the, the two thousand and seventeen audit, we were eighty-three thousand dollars. We had eighty, eighty-three thousand dollars of revenue that we didn't spend, that we had above our budget, budgeted amount. What this would mean is if we would have a revenue-positive budget, that we would budget eighty thousand dollars, and we would expect to be eighty thousand dollars above, uh, what we have. Yeah, but we would need a policy and some backbone to be able to justify that. Not recommending it. Usually, we end up with a little surplus, like what we had in two thousand and seventeen, that we can roll in into our four M funds and invest. Uh, but if we wanna take a more proactive approach to investing and having a fund bal- balance policy, we could choose to do that during the budget process. Um, this is strictly just for general fund, uh, the enterprise funds are, are, are different. They can also have fund balance policies. Um, it's a little bit harder because some of our enterprise funds are in deficit.
That's what I was gonna hit, yeah.
I know one of the things that was extremely helpful for me last year, and perhaps you guys as well, was, uh, the complete breakdown of all of our expenses. And I'm guessing city council's gonna request that of staff again, so we have a detailed description of all of our expenses for the past twelve months, so we can go ahead and analyze that. And then, uh, prior to our first, uh, P and B meeting, which, as our city administrator stated, is July eleventh, if, uh, we, if the P and B can hear back from you guys in regards to what your thoughts are on our expenses, so we can get the first meeting rolling, starting to look at our expenses, because the general fund has, our city administrator, uh, administrator stated, will be the first thing we look at in July. Any additional questions? Okay, there's no action required on this, uh, agenda item, so... Guess we just have to go ahead and get, uh, our twelve months of expenses, and we're ready to go on now.
That's gotta be getting easier to be able to do this, though.
Oh, there was a lot of time spent last year trying to figure out all the numbers, as we all know. And I think now that we have that under our belt, year or two is... and I think now that we have that under our belt, year or two is going to be considerably easy.
Good.
Okay, let's move on to Aide Gulf, which is the Minnesota River Valley Public Utility Commission, otherwise known as MRF PUC, update.
Mayor Hag, members of the city council, this agenda item is just to essentially keep the, the city council informed as far as conversations that I've been having with the administration from Henderson. I've been keeping the, the mayor up to date on some of these conversations, but I thought it was just time to, to let the city council know where we're at, what the potential outcomes could be, and how we're going to move forward. So essentially what I've done is I've identified some cost savings that are associated with possible dissolution of MRF PUC. We've discussed this, or I've discussed this with, with the administration from Henderson, and I've developed, which has been attached, a memo of, of kind of the guidelines that we've discussed and come to terms with. Now in the memo, you'll notice that response is requested by July 1st. Henderson has a lot of stuff going on right now with flooding and whatnot, so they might have some higher priority items to be discussing moving forward. But just so you know, that I'm, I'm keeping my, my finger on the pulse of this and moving this. The idea, if there would be a dissolution, would be that it would be incorporated into the 2019 budget, so by the beginning of 2019, we'd be able to work on all the logistics of this. Just as a, as a reminder, we do have a JPA with Henderson for MRF PUC, or for the creation of MRF PUC. There is a clause in there regarding dissolution and what it means, and essentially it just, it's, it's very straightforward and clear that if either party chooses to dissolve or leave the JPA, MRF PUC would be dissolved, and the assets would be split according to the source of those assets, or source, or the funding sources of those assets. But what we're doing here is kind of a, a different model that's a little bit, it's different than what the JPA has, and essentially what would be proposed is for the city of La Sure to take over the plant and, and purchase the waste load allocations for, or from Henderson. And then what Henderson would do is we'd have a wastewater user agreement with them that you'll see in the, in the memo goes out, I believe, almost 20 years. So what this would look at, look like, and, and this is, I've got some fairly complicated spreadsheets that I've worked on with the finance director to develop where this number should be, and just, it's basically based on the Henderson depreciated value of the plant in Forest Main, so what Henderson has into the plant, it's roughly 10 years old at this moment, so what we use for depreciation in municipal government is just linear depreciation, which means you have a, a value or a life, a life of, of a piece of equipment, and you depreciate the same amount every year. It's also based on future CIP, capital improvement plan contributions from Henderson. Right now Henderson's roughly 5% of operations at the plant, so it's looking at what are the future capital costs, and that would be 5, Henderson would contribute 5% of that. The payments for this would go five years, and they would be made out around July 1st, after the first half tax settlement from the county. The second point would be that, talking about the force main and the collection system, La Sure would own and maintain the collection system, starting at the Henderson Station Road lift station, so as you're driving on 169 south, looking to the west, you'll see a lift station down there. That's essentially where the city of La Sure would, would maintain it. Right now, we have a, a cost share agreement with, with Henderson to maintain part of that. Now if that area ever develops, likely the major, likely the wastewater from that development will exceed the amount of wastewater that's coming from Henderson, so it makes sense for that to be the, the split point between Henderson and La Sure. Henderson would then ma, own and maintain everything to the west of that point. The city of La Sure would be responsible to make sure that lift station is up and running. And then the, the fourth point, this is, this is going out to some of the fees, or some of the wastewater user agreements going out to 2037. So every five years, there would be a 10% increase. It's looking at what the, the dollars per thousand gallons, so, and that's based on 2.3 million gallons monthly from Henderson, and that's what their average has been over the last five years. Right now, as you can imagine, there's, their, their flow is a lot higher due to, due to the flooding, so. But this is looking at what the average costs are, it's looking at what the average bill is for Henderson. I feel it's fair, it's, it's long term, it's something that goes out a long ways, and we won't have to talk about it, or bring it up, or discuss, or negotiate what the terms are of this, unless they exceed the, the given parameters, so exceed certain, certain poundage amounts for each of the TSS, phosphorus, CBOD, and flow. If we end up going, exceeding that by like, let's say 10% or something of that nature, up or down, then these numbers would then be, that would trigger a renegotiation, so. And then basically number five, any planned capital projects in 2018 would use existing fund balance. So right now, there are, well, three projects that have been identified by the, by the MRF PUC board, one being a Centrate kind of plumbing project, and a pretreatment screen project. Both of those have been approved by the MRF PUC board, and will start construction this late summer, fall, I believe. The other one would be the, the land acquisition for the land south of the, the plant, which was approved by council, and there will be a pass through to the city for that. So any remaining fund balance after 2018 would then be transferred to the city of La Sure. Now I think that with the budget that MRF PUC passed last year for 2018, I believe that they would have roughly around $400,000 in, in fund balance that would then be transferred straight to La Sure. This amount may go down based on project, where, where projects come in, or, or other things like that. We have some legal fees that we're, we're watching and monitoring right now. So whatever the fund balance is, would be transferred to the city of La Sure. And then the request was that Henderson responds by July 1st. So just talking a little bit about the, the cost savings, so as you, you may remember, this reorg that was recently adopted in, in April, there was a position called MRF PUC manager. Now if that position isn't ultimately filled, there would be a cost savings of roughly $120,000 annually. We do have some financial, redundant financial services, such as a financial audit, a fiscal, fiscal agent, and then payroll services. Those costs total up to $25,000 annually. There's general liability insurance. Now MRF PUC pays $10,000 a year for that, roughly for us to add the plant on to our policy as a city, it would be 7,000, or, sorry, 3,000 with a $7,000 annual savings for that. There's some contracted services that we use for A licenses. Now we currently have an A license on staff, so that would save $50,000 annually. Roughly that would be about $202,000 of annual savings, just identified from those, you know, personnel, insurance, financial aspects. I feel, and, and the public services director feels, that there will be increased efficiencies to be able to, to be able to just manage the plant for the plant, and be able to have some additional people working, instead of doing administrative functions, working on operations and maintenance. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that this group may have. The next step would be to have a joint meeting between Henderson and La Sure, city council, similar, similar to what we had roughly about a year and a half ago, and just talk this through, if we could get to a point where both cities agree to, to terms, then ideally we'd be able to both pass resolutions, accepting the terms and then going, moving this along. So with that, I'll entertain any questions regarding this update.
I've got a question. Of all the MRF PUC meetings that I've been to, and the number of times that we've talked about MRF PUC, the one thing that I guess I've never asked about, and now we have that situation right upon us with yet another flood, what happens to the flow and strength? Obviously, the numbers can't stay static. Do we see an increase in TSS, our phosphorus, and our CBOD during times of flooding like this?
We don't. So what, what ends up happening is we see an increase in flow, so you have a diluted strength material. The pounds are the same, so the amount of TSS, CBOD, phosphorus stays about the same, but you do have more water going through the plant, which all, which, you know, costs money to process, so there is a, there is a cost for flow. So you will see that both La Sure and Henderson have this when it floods. Henderson, I think, percentage wise, is, is more significant than La Sure's. But there, there is, the strength of material goes way down. It's very diluted when it, when it's flooding.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, we're, we're discussing this, trying to forget how I'm going to say this. As a member and a board member of the, of MRF PUC, why are we, why is these discussions being between your, you and your, your lone administrator at Henderson without the MRF PUC knowing that you're having these conversations regarding this whole thing? That's one of my big questions. Next question is, and follow up, another question is on, you want Henderson to make a decision by July 1st, which is primarily next week, whatever? What do they say, do our city councils say, no, we don't agree to any of these terms? Is that when you go into negotiations with them to change this whole thing?
Yeah, I can, I can address both those. So I believe it was back in March that we had a little conversation at city council about this and, and steps to move it forward, and at that time, I was authorized to engage in a conversation with the city administrator from Henderson. Now, it's been up to the administrator of Henderson to let his city council know what's going on, if, whatever, whatever he chooses. This is my attempt to keep everybody updated. Now I've tried to keep the mayor updated about this, and just, you know, most of it is, is just back and forth until we get something solid. I know MRF PUC is kind of hanging in limbo as far as some of these things go, but essentially this is, I, I don't know if there's a, there's a place for MRF PUC in the process, because it's at that next level of both city councils. So that's, that's why it is where it is right now. You know, I know that I've answered questions from some of the MRF PUC board members on this, and I hope that the administration in Henderson is, is keeping this updated as well. Regarding, what if they say no? Then it's, then we revert back to the, the way that the JPA is defined of just splitting the assets and moving forward, if that's agreeable to this city council. This is a city council decision, and if that's something that they want to do, or if you guys want to do, then we can do that. You know, we have an opportunity to, to potentially purchase some waste load allocation credits for the city. It puts us in a position, if there is some economic development industrial wise, that we could handle that without having them put in additional pretreatment, which is something that an industry might come in and say, that's attractive. You know, they can, you know, forego that process and just send their waste to the, the wastewater treatment plant. So there is an opportunity here. Now it's just the, the numbers and those things, we're trying to be fair, and I need to justify this on paper to myself, so I can justify it to city council, as to, you know, because that's a large sum of money over five years. You know, how do we get there? What, what's the rationale for this? And, and, you know, basically have to talk you guys into wanting to do it, if we, if we do go down that route. I think the numbers speak for themselves. We, we break the numbers down, the, some of the cost savings that we will see over, over five years and compare it to what the cost will be. After that five-year point, our ROI starts increasing quite a bit, so we, we, you know, kind of can start seeing the, the light at the end of the tunnel for some of the things we have going on internally here.
Regarding depreciation, you're using a linear depreciation model to come up with these numbers, and I certainly understand what that's all about. My question would be, we've had the plant now in existence for approximately 10 years. That said, does, does linear depreciation take into consideration whether or not preventive maintenance has been done on the plant throughout the course of the 10 years? Or does it just go ahead and assume that X number of years has gone by, and now this is what the plant is worth?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So I would say the, the linear depreciation does not take into account O and M, but what does is the capital improvement plan. So looking at it, you know, if some piece of equipment's used more than what they expected, that'll be included in the capital costs. The linear depreciation, just so everybody knows, the plant life has been determined from the beginning to be 30 years. So it, you know, roughly is a, a $19 million plant over 30 years. And I, I can't remember off the top of my head what that Henderson contribution was for the plant and the force main, but that's how that works. And so let's say Henderson's portion was $3 million over 30 years, you know, the depreciation's $300,000 a year, if my math is right in my head. So that's kind of how it works. Now it doesn't incorporate, there, there's other models, but for municipalities, it's standard to use linear. There's other ways to look at it, but we hope that we incorporate some of those O and M costs into the capital improvement plan.
And to be clear, everything that's CIP and CEP related for 2018's been identified, and corrective actions are being taken on those items, so in essence, at the completion of the, of the, the two capital improvement projects that are underway as we speak, we should in essence have ourselves a pretty darn good plant.
I think so. I mean, in reality, there's always going to be capital costs moving forward. You know, we have a 10-year-old plant, the life is 30, things will start falling off in that 10 to 20-year range. Now we won't ever have to replace the plant 100%, but there will be components of it that need to be replaced. MRF PUC has had some impellers that have gone out this year that were unexpected, and they've purchased those, so some items might go over budget this year, but it's kind of the, you need to process the wastewater. There's no, there's no way around it, and we want to do it as efficient, as efficiently and thoughtfully as we can. So I would say that, you know, we will have a good plant, it, it is a good plant right now, it's, there's, there's nothing that I think that we could add to it. You know, those costs are included in the capital costs.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, again, this is a no action item, so appreciate the update in regards to MRF PUC status. Okay, now we move on into our comments, reports, and items of appreciation. Okay, why don't we start off with you, council member Fabulous?
Well, in appreciation, I would like to thank all of the people that have given in resumes and, and applications for, for working with this city. There was a point in time where I don't think we would have had even a third of the amount of applications that we've had, and that means to me that, that we're becoming more and more attractive as a city for, for talent, and for people who want to, want to volunteer. That's what I have. I don't have anything on the MRF PUC front to be able to talk about right now.
Okay. Council member Huntington?
No, sir, I don't. I have an HRA meeting on Wednesday, so next meeting I'll have something.
HRA on Wednesday?
Yep.
Okay. Council member Roloff?
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. I've got a couple of things. First off, it's that time of year again where I'd like to go ahead and extend the invitation to the members of city council and to our city administrator for the giant celebration parade, first weekend of August, that Sunday, so I think that it'd be great to go ahead and do what we did last year. I think we all had a good time, and I think the community really enjoyed it, so I'm going to also have another conversation with our city administrator about some other ideas regarding the parade here probably within the week, but I just wanted to get that on your calendar, see how you all feel about that, so we can talk about that again. We do have to get the application in, it was actually due earlier this month, and we've put it in, but just want to make sure it's on your radar for first Sunday of August. And the second thing I have is with our Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee, we now have all of our members identified, including two members from city council. I know that we're waiting on one individual for some health issues to kind of rectify. Do we have an update on that? Do we have any idea when we're going to be able to go ahead and have our first ARPAK meeting?
I don't have a solid date at this moment, but as soon as I do, I'll, I'll make sure it's known. it's known.
Okay. How about our city clerk slash HR specialist slash everything else that you do? Stacy, anything?
I have nothing.
Okay, how about city attorney?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and turn it on over to our city administrator.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Haig. If you, you maybe noticed a lot of activity at the future dog park off of King's Way Drive. We poured concrete last Friday, believe that's set. Now, the next pro, next step is to install some of the benches and things like that. So this will be opening up pretty quickly. After that, we're going to use a sod cutter to cut in the trail, put down some mulch, and then we have a, an event, an opportunity for volunteers sometime around the middle of July to plant 87 shrubs along Sherwood Drive there to add, to act as a screen for that neighborhood. So there will be something posted on Facebook about that, and the opportunity, we'll let, let them know about when we're going to get these, these shrubs and how we can have some volunteers. The outdoor pool has concrete that, those furnishings are going to be installed probably next week, some picnic tables and benches, and we've heard a lot of good things about that, being able to have a, a connection from the parking lot to the outdoor pool makes a lot of sense. It looks good, you know, and it's, it's getting used as is right now. So on Wednesday, as council member Huntington alluded, there's an HRA meeting. I plan on attending that, at least for the first half, and there is also a fire commission meeting that evening that starts at 5:30. So that's one of the four fire commission meetings we have this year. Believe that's all I have.
And one final thing, I'd like to also echo council member Fabulous's comment regarding the volunteers in our community. It's very much appreciated, the number of people that have stepped up, not only for city council, but also for the recreation and parks advisory committee, and also with the net stepping up now for the planning and zoning. It just shows that hopefully, we're all doing a real good job and that you all want to be part of the team. So thank you for everybody that has taken the time to go ahead and jump on board. We really appreciate it. With that, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Did you have something, council member Fabulous?
Yeah, just one more thing. As, you know, as we're promoting to have folks downtown and around the area, and we're looking at, at 31 new sidewalks, that project is still hopefully going to start next year, and we're, we're working with the downtown master plan. I think it's important for the folks out there to remember that we have crosswalks. It's been an issue lately with, with people not stopping at the crosswalks when people are standing there getting ready to, to, to walk. I had a situation on my own where I stopped and I had a person go around me while I was stopped and coming in the opposite direction, an 18-wheeler and two cars, it didn't stop, coming in the opposite direction. I think that we all need to be conscious of the idea that we're trying to promote having people using the stores and the sidewalks and the businesses in our town, and we need to be mindful of, of safety when it, when it comes to people that are walking and riding bikes.
Well said. We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.